Done yet. The, another new worksheet is the beginning of year balance. In the previous version, on each fund page, you entered what was the starting year balance. But this way, you don't have to do it on all of those separate pages, worksheets. You do it in this one place. And so this is a once a year thing. You put in what is the current fiscal year. That does, every, all of, that information goes to all of the worksheets, except for the bond worksheet. Your prediction of bond rates does have to be updated separately. Put in the starting balance, the planned deposits, and then all that information is used in the following. This page is similar to what had before. Columns were made narrower so it fits on your screen. And there's nothing to do on this. This is just the worksheet that is the beginning of all of the fund worksheets, which will be summed at the summation pages, which is at the end. Then comes the individual worksheets, town buildings, the town hall, highway equipment, et cetera. And then, right now, there are a couple of extra worksheets, so that you could add another fund if, without having to just copy. And then, at the end of that, there's an end of some worksheet. Again, there's nothing to do on this page. Just all of the fund worksheets that need to be totaled have to be in between the beginning and the end. There's the summation worksheet. And I think that this chart is new. And this chart shows what is the total deposits for all funds, income for all funds, and withdrawals for all funds for all 20 years. You can see that the purple color there is the deposits. These little tiny green bumps are what's predicted. Yeah, kind of sticky mouse here. Is what's predicted for income. So obviously, income is, it's there, being calculated, but it's not particularly significant. The bond rates, this is a place where you do need to enter a new date. And you would not want this one to update automatically, because you need to also enter your predictions for what you think future bond rates are going to be. Based on the most recent New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank sale, where rates did go up, and some predictions of what future rates might look like, I've raised these a little bit and made the acceleration up to the three and a half percent a little steeper than it was previously. But this is, this is something that is a user input. You can put in what you predict those rates to be. And then there is this page, which shows a summary of information that's from the individual fund worksheets. There's no user inputs here. This is all just summary information. It shows, grabbing from all those individual worksheets, what have you entered for the annual increase, with a little bar graph to show you which ones are the biggest and the smallest. These inputs are something that probably needs to be worked on some. Particularly these two percent ones. Some of those perhaps really should be a little higher than that. And then there's, to the right, if you remember, on each worksheet, you can set required end of year margin. So after the funds are expended for that year, if you do not want the fund to be drawn down to zero, then you might want to set a margin to be left. And that margin can be set as a percentage, and a minimum and a maximum. And this just shows a summary of what you entered. And then this one over here shows, I should probably make this smaller. That's better. Not quite. This shows cost totals. And you can, if you want to look at just a subset, like this first scenario, I've entered a one for every worksheet, except for the town buildings. So if you want to look at what's the total current cost for everything except town buildings, there it is. If you, in this other second scenario, I've entered every, a one for every fund, which is a capital expense. So accrued benefits and revaluation are not capital expenses. So you might want to just look at everything that's a capital expense.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Oh, yes, at any time, please.
Thank you. Hey, where are the police expenditures? Is that just not on there right now?
Good question. So this, as it is right now, handles all of the projected costs for the trust funds or capital reserve funds.
Okay, and that's just part of a budget?
Right now, all of the police expenditures are part of a budget. There has been some talk about a reserve fund for police expenditures. And I think that's something we could talk about separately. And it is something that could be included. But right now, all the expenses that are put in are either going to be assigned to, to come from a reserve or trust fund. So it's money that you need to save for. Or it's going to come from a bond, it could come from a bond in the case of the buildings. Or it's marked as just funding, not planned. So right now, there isn't an option to say that the funding is to come from the budget. But that could be.
And is there a way that we could look at that, these things, compared to the other parts of the budget in a grand page at some point? So we could just see the total expenditures of the town and just really?
I think you could. That was one of the reasons why we liked the name Financial Planning Tool. Because it sounds like you could expand it to make you do whatever you want.
Okay, great.
And then the last page is just, this has been changed, but this is a place where you can work out what are the real historical cost increases. So for example, put in, fired some of the fire department expenses. It's a very sticky mouse. So the SCBA's were purchased in 2001. They went out and were purchased again in 2020. Here's what the cost was. So that represents an annual increase of almost five percent per year for that whole 19 years. The big one here is Engine One. Back in 1999, it was $150,000. It's now $627,000 after the $25,000 trading credit. That's 6.8% per year for all 22 years. So this is a place where you, if you found other historical examples of equipment that the town has purchased, and what have been the cost increases, and that would give you some more knowledge as to what should be entered for each of the funds, for each different kinds of equipment, for this annual cost increase figure. And that's where you can see that, obviously, for the fire equipment, annual cost increase is far more than the rate of inflation. So, let's look at, we can look at any one of these. So for town buildings, as an example, the information in blue came from the CIP. The fiscal years, the cost estimate came from the CIP. Here's a place where you put in the cost estimate type. This is a, has pull down choices. A is the highest rating, competitive bids. B, market research. C, professional estimate. D, educated guess. E is just a plain guess. So just to show you how it works, if we say that's a plain guess, over here in this little column, it shows up as an E. And it's in red, the colors change. If this one was market research, it shows up as a B, and that's in green, a kind of pale green. Competitive bids is an A. And that's supposed to be a, I said green. There's also a place where you put in what is the date of that estimate. So we are now in, doing this plan in fiscal year 2022. These estimates came in from 2021. So you can see that where the 2021 estimate was $12,000, the 2022 cost, and that number comes in automatically, is $12,480. And that's using this four percent annual increase. So this way, when you roll it over to the new year, the new year's cost estimates are all automatically updated by whatever the annual increase has been. And the, my expectation of how you might use this is that when you're going through and working on updating cost estimates, putting in links for them, like here's a link for furnaces. So I went and looked up furnace history, and there's a spreadsheet of the last five furnaces we've purchased. Where were they? What kind of fuel? What kind of furnace? What was the efficiency? What was, who was the vendor? What did it cost? And then in this spreadsheet, I put in cost increase at 3%. And it brings it up to today. And you can see that the most expensive furnace we've purchased was like $7,400. The average was $6,200. And so then you look at these $12,000 and you say, hmm, that's probably not right. In fact, we know that's not right. That's not what it was supposed to be.
That's excellent. So you can really, you can really figure out what we're looking at and plan ahead and look down the road and make some real adjustments with those three.
And these other two little columns are in here because, in order to give you more room, you, gosh, I'm finding this mouse to be really sticky. Estimated cost, this one, this one, this one. You may want to just hide those. So now, if you were now talking about, okay, what are our priorities? Which ones are we going to do? When are we going to do them? You're shifting around the years. Perhaps you're deciding that, yes, we're going to do it, or no, we're not going to do it. See, that one just came out because I put the X in there. You're deciding, no, you're not going to do that. In that case, you don't need all of those other columns. So even though sheet protection is on, it does allow you to hide those columns, and then you can bring them back. So the idea is that, when you're updating those, you want those columns visible. But if you're really just talking about, what are we going to do when? And what can we afford? And what are we not going to fund at this time? You don't need all those other detailed columns. You can hide them.
So if you wanted to find out, say, a building, like a parish house, and you wanted to say, okay, what's that going to cost us over the next 15 years? And look at that. You could go through parish house, look at what updates need to happen, what renovations need to happen, and that kind of thing, and actually see that whole total value.
You can see whatever it is you've put in. So in town buildings, the previous committee worked at adding quite a few things. So all these ones that are in that brick red color, those are items that was added by the previous committee. The blue is what came from the CIP. CIP. I've put in some space for some, some extra ones. And we could make that even more. Parish House is not in here right now. There's nothing listed there.
So you're saying that this is, that we're going to track recurring costs in here too? I mean, let's look at the fire truck for a minute. Are you talking about? The fire truck is, what, $652,000 at a one-time acquisition? One-time acquisition. But then there's the, the operating cost, the recurring operating cost, which on an aircraft, you'd look at as a power-by-the-hour program of some kind to try and cover that. Are we going to look at that? Or, maybe it's not applicable to this, don't get me wrong. But one of the things we don't do is track our, track and look at the future as far as hourly operating costs for things like fire trucks and major dump trucks, you know, et cetera.
Yes, that's something that we need to do. The first step here is, for things like this new building that we're in, which was new 17, 18 years ago, we look at it as, it was sized to be adequate for 50 years. But we know that the MEP that's in here, the mechanical, some of the electrical, the plumbing, the heating, air conditioning, those systems and the roof, the roofing, are not going to last for 50 years.
We didn't put any plan in, so we have no savings.
So as a first step, those kinds of capital expenses, whatever, whatever quality of roofing you bought, you know that it's good for 25 years or 30 years or whatever it was. This is a 20-year plan. That should be in here. In fact, we, I have, that is entered in here.
Excellent.
So that's the first step, is to get those known capital things in. Then you write, there's all those O and M operating maintenance expenses that you know you're going to have because of the equipment or the facilities.
Well, I feel certain, for instance, the manufacturer of that fire truck can tell us what the operating cost per mile is.
Yes.
That would be great.
And it's got hour meters on it, I'm sure of that. We just, we need to do more of that, is all I'm saying, yeah.
I think that's absolutely true. One of the things that I, I volunteered to help Steve with some of the things in this building. And I haven't had turn, time this week to look into it. But one of the questions I had is, so for this building, there's a number of separate air conditioning systems.
Yeah.
Is there a place where you could just go to a file or a database or of some sort and find out, how many separate air conditioning systems are there? Who's the manufacturer? What's the capacity? When were they installed? And all that kind of information?
I doubt it, right? I don't think I've seen anything like that, really. No, I didn't see that.
And then, from that, you would then know, okay, what kind of service is supposed to be done on those each year?
Right. And it would help give people a checklist too, to work from, so they would know.
And how long do you expect them to last?
Right.
And if you expect them to last 15 years or 20 years, well, a lot of the times already gone by. Each one of those individually should be in here if it's?
So this would be, this is a huge project right now. But once we get it going, it just means when we get new things, we have to add that in, or else we spend things, we need to add it. But it's not going to be that, it's not going to be that huge every year. It's just going to be really about maintaining.
Correct. I've, as questions have come up, I've tried to make it as easy as possible to have this thing work going forward, to roll it over to a new year.
Yeah.
So that there are no, or very, very little in the way of manual operations that have to be done to roll it over to a new year.
Great.
Related to that, one of the other questions that came up is about the cost estimates. So there's, looking back at this structure, right now, these, there's a separate folder. And the way I picture this, this FPT folders' structure would be kept. And there's a separate folder that right now has, what is that, a dozen? Cost estimates. But if you go through what's in the workbook right now, we need around 100 cost estimates.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay? And when I showed this previously, it was Kerry Brown that asked, okay, so these cost estimates, you just keep adding more and more, but some of them are going to become obsolete. You've already bought that thing. Maybe you no longer need that cost estimate because you're not going to buy that thing again. Or you've got a new cost estimate now.
Right.
And that old one is of no value. So how do you update that? And I have two ideas. One is that, my first was that there needed to be a separate folder for each, each fund. But when you look at some of the funds, like Farapons and Sisterns, there's not very much there. I'm not sure that that really made sense to have a dozen different folders. The other possibility is that all of the folders have to have specified prefixes to the file name. So here's an example of one. This town hall AV estimate. A suggestion is that the first two letters of the prefix tells you what fund it's from. So TB is town buildings. And the next three, or next four digits show you the year of the estimate. In this way, if all of them had that type of prefix, then all of the estimates that relate to town buildings would all show up together when it's sorted by name. And they would be in year order. So the oldest ones would be at the top. And it would be easy, or much easier for the manual process of eliminating old ones that are no longer used.
What's, do we have a firm definition of what is a capital piece of equipment?
That's going to be for you, for the select board, because that's?
What is, what is it now? Do we, do we operate, what is a, what determines a capital acquisition?
In the CIP, I believe they stated first, it's $5,000 or more.
$5,000, okay.
And it has an economic life of
Three years.
Three years or more. And that's been their definition. And in the past, that's been something of a sticking point, I think, for the board because there were some things that the board perhaps wanted to have, be saving money for in a reserve fund. The radios was an example, where an individual radio was $4,000, the portable radios. But of course, you need a whole fleet of them, which is more like $100,000 to have portable radios for every fireman, firefighter on scene. So it's up to the select board to determine that.
Well, I believe, I believe a cash standard bill is $5,000 for, for the definition of capital.
Well, my recommendation would be that this is for the board to do its planning. The trustees of trust funds, when we, we're responsible for, or we can't release funds for anything other than the stated purpose of that fund.
I don't question that at all, John. I just wonder.
But we don't, we don't have any standard for it has to be more than X dollars.
Okay, so, so in fact, I mean, there could be all kinds of things that go in here, just, okay.
And then we just have to?
It doesn't have to be over $5,000.
Correct. It's, it is entirely up to the board as to what they want to put in. Because as I see this, this is, this is your financial planning tool.
Okay.
And?
And then that can be sorted appropriately when it's time to put in other places. But right now, we need to know what we're thinking for.
Yes. I, I have seen times when a more than $10,000 or a few tens of thousands of dollars were spent on things that were never in the CIP. And some of those were things that were too small to ever get entered into the CIP.
Right.
But for example, when the entry door to the town hall was replaced, it was a, had residential quality hardware on it. It was replaced with a commercial quality door, with commercial quality hardware. That cost less than $2,000, but it came out of the capital reserve fund.
Right.
It was obviously a capital improvement to the building.
So it could have come out of the other fund, which was appropriate for that?
So it came out of the town buildings capital reserve fund, even though it had never been in the CIP because it didn't meet that level.
Yeah.
But it's up to you to decide what you put in. And I think it's also up to you to decide whether or not you need to have a strict definition, or whether you want to look at it on an item-by-item basis and decide, no, that's just something we should have in the budget, or yes, that's something we should have in here.
I just think the more information we have, the more we can plan. So something comes up in a year and you realize, you're going to need that again. And, you know, it's just great to put it in, right?
So, so I think that this question about how do we manage these? Are they in separate folders? How do we name them? I was thinking that I might talk with Selectman Bogby about that separately because he's, between the two of us, maybe we have the experience on, some ideas on that. So, what else do I have? Oh, another question. This is, this is really for the future. But right now, the transfer stations, there's a transfer station equipment capital reserve fund. And there's a highway equipment capital reserve fund. And those are two separate capital reserve funds. In the past, those are two separate departments with two separate people in charge of those. And now they're both under the umbrella of one person. Anytime that you can have a common fund serving more purposes, and it can make sense, there's the possibility of financial advantage. And you can see that, I think it's probably easy for me to give you a little example. If you had two separate funds, one of them, each one has just one expense. One of them needs $100,000 in two years. The other one needs $100,000 in four years. Well, for that first one to get $100,000 in two years, you're going to set aside $50,000 and $50,000. Now you're getting $100,000, now you spend it. For the second one, that needs $100,000 four years from now, you're going to set aside $25,000 each year. In four years, you're getting $100,000, and you can spend it. So now you're looking at, what did the town have to set aside?
Right.
For the two, it had to set aside 75, 75, then 25, then 25.
And you could have evened it all up.
Correct. If those both came out of the same fund, it would have been 50/50, 50/50 each year.
That's easier, yeah.
So if, and this, I think, is an opportunity. If you have something like transfer station and highway equipment, and they're now under the umbrella of one department, directed by one person, and then it may make sense at some point to? and then it may make sense at some point to combine those. It will never cost you more.
Right. It might cost you less.
It, it will cost you less. I did not have time to actually do that this afternoon to, but I can take another copy of this and just take those, plug it into, like, say, that extra one, and see if you would have put those together, what would the difference be compared to doing them separately?
So everything on here is something that's in a budget and will stay in the budget and isn't going to go away at the end of the year, where things that are in, like we're talking about the police, that, if what's spent is spent and what isn't goes into the group. So this is, this is not that. This is going to be, that money is set aside and it stays in those trust funds.
If, if for whatever that line item is...
But before you change that,
Okay.
I have a question. Is that, what's it, is that the very top of this sheet?
Yes.
Where it says 2022?
Correct. So this is...
I'm trying to understand how you have a deposit of $104,500 and a withdrawal of $269, and still have $171,000.
Ah, because the beginning-of-year balance, see this, this number over, this number over here?
Yeah.
$332,843. This mouse is really sticky.
Well, that's all right, John. That's all right.
Now you know where it comes from.
Oh, it seems, maybe it works better on this paper. So the beginning-of-year balance, $332,843. That beginning-of-year balance, you take that amount, you add in the $104,000, you add in the $3,700 that's expected for interest to be earned, you subtract out the $269, and you get the $171.
All right. I was just looking at the section here where it said deposits, withdrawals.
Nice enough catch.
What doesn't show up, what's not seeing there and what was in the previous version is this number over here had to be entered on each worksheet. And now, instead of entering it on each worksheet, it's in here at the beginning-of-year balance.
That's great.
And it's that number there, the $332. And that particular one, you can see I actually entered it as a formula, because we're combining Town Buildings and the Town Hall Capital Reserve Fund as if they were one. The Town Hall Capital Reserve Fund only has a little over $50,000 in it.
Correct.
It, of course, can only be used for the Town Hall. The Town Buildings can be used for Town Hall or, of course, any of the other buildings.
So if we did something to Town Hall, we would want to use that fund so that we would then see our...
Correct. Correct.
Got it. It's making sense.
So, the, the other feature here is these deposit overrides. And it might be... Well, yeah, actually, let me just make this, if I can make this smaller. Yeah. Can you still read that?
Yep.
Okay, there's a place here for an override. And when I first put that in, I was thinking that it was, in case you looked at that number and said, "No, we don't want to set aside $571,000", assuming you're going to do all these things, we're only going to set aside 100 or 200 or whatever. But, and I thought that that would be something that you would just do occasionally. But I'm actually expecting that you would always use the override when you come to your final plan, because this calculates that amount that calculated deposit with all of its significant figures. And you're not going to write a warrant article for $571,474. Or if you look at highway equipment, you're not going to write a warrant article for $55,004.
Right.
You're going to say, let me make this smaller. You're going to say, I'm going to round that off to $55,000.
And then you know what you're asking for.
And that's what you would ask for.
Great.
And then you can see, you know, the next year where it was $55,004, it's now $55,005, because you're going to make those $4 up someplace. So I'm expecting that you would always, when you come to do the, actually work up the budget, you would always override those, at the very least, just to round it back to, or up or down to a nice number that you would put in the warrant article.
Perfect.
The other reason would, of course, be because you actually want to make a significant change. That could be for something like, right now, we are paying on bonds for two buildings. And those are going away in just a few years. So you might look ahead and say, "I'm going to reduce some payments now." And when those bonds go away, that's going to be taken up with some larger payments.
So one of the things that I wanted to do before we had all the department heads here was go through this. And I wanted to make sure that we understood what we were asking department heads to do, so that they knew how to do their work. Sorry, I'm not going to the microphone. So I'm wondering, as we're looking at this, are we thinking about, what, like, I think, you've already spoken to the department heads about each, their individual areas?
We did, oh...
A while ago, right?
Yeah. A few months ago.
Okay.
Back when we were still doing Zoom meetings.
Right.
We had with the Town Administrator and all the department heads.
Great.
I had a Zoom meeting. And we went through an earlier version of this and explained all the pieces of it. My suggestion for how to do this in a most efficient use of your time and the department head's time would be that I meet with each of the department heads, functioning as a data entry clerk, to populate these, you know, what is your current cost estimate? What kind of estimate is it? What is the date of that estimate? Do you have some documentation for that? And when I first thought of this, I was thinking it was going to be a Zoom meeting. But it could be in this room or downstairs, because there's a better projector.
Does it have to be a meeting, or could you have, like, a form for them and ask them to fill it in and then anything that they were confused on? And then that way, they could do it at their own time when it's flexible?
Correct. That's, that's another way of doing it.
Yeah. And then if you had a problem, you could ask them the specifics.
Correct. That's another way of doing it. It could be their choice.
Perfect.
If they want.
Yep.
And it could be something where they're given a spreadsheet that they fill in.
Yep. And then you figure out how to...
It could be just a paper that they write numbers into.
Great.
And so forth, and then I enter it. We, I do need to work out how these, how the files for the cost estimates get here. I, I don't want hundreds of megabytes of attachments, millions of megabytes of attachments all of a sudden. So I was going to maybe talk to Scott about a way that we could do that in a, you know, some orderly fashion.
Each, each department has such a different way that they do things. And if you're in FIRE, you might have some free time here and you might not there. And if you're in a different, you know, planning zoning or whatever, you're going to have different ways you can use your time. So that'd be great if we could offer that.
So, so I, I think that, that that's a good idea, giving them the choice.
Choice, yep.
You can have, and I can cut out, you know, one sheet out of this.
Perfect.
And each one gets their own sheet. And it's, it's just entering all those, those fields that need to be entered. And, or they can do it on paper, or...
Give it to somebody.
Or I can meet with them downstairs and be typing it in.
I love that.
And that way that they have questions about it, I can answer that.
And then maybe we could meet together once all that's inputted.
Yes, yes. Then, once that's in, then I would expect that
Realize.
the actual spreadsheet gets disseminated to everybody,
Right.
including the department heads, you know, ahead of time, before you're going to then have a meeting where you're going to talk about actually setting priorities and, and talking to department heads about how important A is or B.
Correct.
Can you scroll down? That will work for everything except for probably the red ones. Because the red ones, well, not, that's not a good red one.
Right, so if we go over here...
So like, some of these,
Right.
that, they're going to say, "Well, what is that? What does that mean?"
Right.
Some of them they could probably fill out, but some of them they're not.
Maybe that's, maybe that's fine. You fill out the ones you know and you can do, and then you don't for the ones you don't, and then we have, that's our job.
Well, it's, it's also in terms of who's responsible for some of these. Like, scroll up a little bit. For PSC, is that the Fire Department? Is it the Police Department? Like, the Sprinkler system, who is that?
Buildings.
Well, just, at the last meeting, at the last meeting, it was talking about Public Works.
Right.
Is likely to have that responsibility.
So that makes it easier. So you're going to rearrange a few things over there.
So, right, so that would make it...
So it's not going to be just their town. It's going to be...
Correct. And I just think that's something that, yeah, so they need to be able to see what the other ones are working on. But we have to think about, how are we going to decide which buildings we maintain, take care of, give everything they need? Which buildings do we completely renovate? And which buildings do we no longer keep? Because the expense to keep them up versus the value of that building. I think that's going to be where we really have to make some choices.
And decisions can be made only when you have the numbers in terms of how much.
Yes, and, and what goes in here is just part of the numbers.
Right.
Because...
There's some maintenance, right?
As Chairman Brown pointed out, it's not just paying for the building.
Right.
It's the maintenance of the building. And so some of the buildings we have may be able to be renovated for less than the cost of building new.
Right.
But maybe their heating costs or other costs are going to be more.
Right, and so you're not looking at the whole picture.
And one of the things that the previous committees were just barely beginning to look at was lifecycle, lifecycle cost.
Yeah.
And that's what you want.
Yes, absolutely. I think, because we, we have to plan for the future and we have a lot of things coming at us down the road and we really have to be ready.
When, when we were thinking about new buildings, we were just starting to talk about that. Like, for example, the lowest-cost floor finish that we have, like, out there in the hallway there, requires significant maintenance.
Right, to cost more over time.
Correct. And we were just starting to collect that information to find out, you know, how many times a year and what are the materials and how much, how much, how many hours does he spend doing it?
Right.
And so forth.
I read that for every dollar you spend on solar, you save, I don't know, some crazy amount of money by having a passive solar building. So you can save this money, but you could also save even more money by starting back at the beginning and insulating properly and doing things.
It's, it's all of that. It's, I've talked before about that, that what I thought was, would be a wise choice to consider or evaluate for a couple of heat pumps instead of the air coupled that are planned
Yep.
at the Town Center. I don't know whether that actually would pay.
It's a point of view.
But many places it does. And particularly where you have a number of buildings in play. And there were plans for putting in at least four separate air coupled heat pumps
Right.
in two, two buildings.
Which is maintenance on each one and to replace each one and, you know, there's a lot of things that are involved.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a big picture to look at.
So I, I think on the request of the department heads, I should, for each of these, develop a simplified spreadsheet.
That'd be great.
That has just, which is easy for me to do, which has just the inputs for, for that department, for that fund, that they could do the inputs on, and...
Just three options or whatever, these are how you're going to, which way would you like to do? How would you like to plan?
And we, how, or they could just do it on paper.
Right.
Or I can meet with them.
Perfect.
And it's up to you to give the instructions to them.
Right, of course.
You're the boss, not me.
Right.
So it should be clear that...
We would offer those.
I'm going to try to help, but, but I'm not telling them what to do.
So do you gentlemen agree that that would be the right, the best use of everyone's time in the easiest way? That way they can really do it the way it fits best for them? Okay, so I love that. So I guess we will go forward by offering those choices.
And then we'll just set up a meeting between us and them. Anybody can show up, of course.
Right.
But then we'll talk about each one of these. Maybe some of the smaller ones we combine on the same night or something. But I think Town Buildings should be all by itself.
Town Buildings absolutely needs to be by itself.
Couple of highway and transfer station together with the Road and Bridge Fund.
Yeah.
And then highway equipment with Sisterns and...
We had originally, we had originally talked about having a survey go out and it's been challenging to figure out how to make that move forward. And I don't know, I feel like, you know, as we go into this process, it's hard to get feedback from the residents about how these, how they stand. But I think having the dollar values can help, you know, once we have this information. But I just think it's, we're at an important point where we have a lot of things happening that haven't, I don't know, haven't been decided necessarily.
Well, some of these things are going to be, I don't want to say no brainers, but they're going to be, yeah, we're going to do that anyway.
Right, and then there's some things like the annex and the, you know, what, how is that going to go forward? What is, what does the circle of anxiety have? What do they not? What is, what do we maintain? What do we know? How does the library function while it's trying to figure out what to do? I think there's just some things that are definitely challenging brainers.
The parish house, there's lots of.
Yeah.
They get forks in the road.
Yes.
So we have to decide which fork we're going to take on many of those things. And one of the ones you mentioned earlier was the parish house, you know, that's sitting out there too. So there's a lot of things. And I think when we get all this information back, you're going to see that our desires, if you will, are way more than we're going to afford. So there's going to be some hard choices being made. Because I think for me, it's going to be, there's certain things that we're just going to do. We're just going to do it.
Yep.
And there's certain things that are going to be in it. I'd love to do it, but I don't have enough money right now.
Right.
And there's going to be some things that, and there's no way we're ever going to do this.
And there's some things that we could say, "We can't do this alone, but if we, if we did this together with two other towns, maybe it's a truck that we share, or maybe it's a, you know, I don't know, whatever it is that's neat, that it's something we want, but we don't need all the time and we can really think about..." Because, because we have a lot of towns in the same position we're in, where they don't have the money for every single thing they need.
It's, yeah, you, you could have an entry which is one half of a X kind of truck.
Right, right.
And you've entered one half of the dollar amount.
Right.
And it shows up with an X in that column because, or perhaps you are actually saving toward it.
Right.
And you can then go to Madberry and say, "See, we're saving for half of this."
Right.
If you save the other half, we can buy it together.
Right. Or you use it two-thirds of the time, use it one-third or whatever. But I think it's just important to open up those doors, because we do have, we do, the town owns so many trucks and things and they're not all in use all year. I mean, snowplows, you need as many snowplows as you need, then you need them when it stops. You can't share a snowplow, obviously. Fire trucks are challenging to share, but...
Well, my, my main concern about this, because I think it's a great program, we talked about it, and that's how you feed the bear.
Yeah.
How you get the, make sure that data is accurate and goes in the right place, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This is no, you know, one person sitting at a empty work desk or...
No, it's a big project.
This requires a lot of information. To feed it, it has to be bad information. And I don't know if we're, you know, just how we're going to do that, to be honest with you.
I can't imagine not doing it, though. Like, if we, how do we make...
I'm not suggesting that. I'm, I'm just trying to understand how we're going to feed there.
I think that's the separating it into parts and figuring out which, whose department is which department and then...
But we'll see.
Yeah.
That's, that's also part of why these two columns are here. So you see all these items, they show up with a big red E. That's a pretty bad grade. Great. And that's because those are all plain guesses. There's one here that shows up with a pound symbol in the age column. And that's because it's a two-digit number. It doesn't even fit. It's from 2010. And so it would jump out at you as to how old these things are or how good the quality is.
I mean, we just, we've got to have a way of defining who's going to do the data entry on this. I mean, are the department heads, et cetera, et cetera, going to turn the data into somebody
So you mean not this year, but down the road?
And then somebody else is going to do the entry, you know, it's just, it's things like that.
The, the hard part is this inertial part. Because after you, we determine, sit down and determine, this is what we're doing for the next 20 years. What you're going to get in subsequent years is something that got added. The CIP came up with something, or we came up with something. And we have to see how that fits. We have to see how that fits into the plan. So it's not gonna be this big nut we have to crack every single year.
Right.
So it's gonna be just updating those. And I think John's done a very nice job in terms of switching from one fiscal year to the next.
Yeah.
But I think this is something that needs to be reviewed on a regular basis, periodic basis.
Yep.
And to say, okay, well, are these still valid? Uh, we've got something that's like three years old and we're planning on doing it two years.
Does it replace the current C I P?
It's totally different, totally different.
But it, but it.
It replaces it, or they're both under malfunction. They're, they're, they're both under malfunction. Right now, the legislative board has determined that the planning board will do the C I P.
So that's something that they're, they can continue to do if they wish to. This is something totally different.
But you're not concerned about there could be differences between the C I P and this then? I mean, how do you keep them valid?
Each year that the C I P is done, if there's things that they've added, that's something that we can consider and put in for this particular plan, so.
Uh, it, I think um a way to look at it is it's, it's kinda like the advisory budget committee. Advisory budget committee produces um a budget, um and it is their recommendation to the board. But the board doesn't just rubber stamp it. The board looks at it, considers it, um and then makes their own choices. And the, the C I P, the state statute says that the C I, the function of it is only advisory to the governing body.
But the C I P, the C I P has the same data as this sheet right here. None of the numbers are the same?
No, in terms of the stuff that got loaded initially, but this has way more.
I understand that, but it also has common link, it has.
Right.
Common data between them, right?
Right.
As, in terms of the, the entries, yes. In terms of some of the numbers, no.
Okay.
But the C I P, as we've been running it as a town, has not covered the needs of the town. We haven't even looked at buildings, we haven't done any of these things. So what was working, what was, what we did use wasn't working in a way that we were planning properly.
That's cause we didn't do it.
Well, there you go.
If, if the town was gonna implement impact fees, um then those impact fees have to be based on the capital improvement program. Um, and that capital improvement program has to be produced by um the, a capital improvement um committee that's either of the planning board type or the separately appointed type, um which has specified members that come from the different groups, as specified in the state statute. Um, and you can only do that if you have a master plan that's been created following state statute. Um, so if there was a plan for impact fees, which I think there isn't, um but if there was, that would have to be based on the capital improvement program.
When I remember that we discussed having a capital improvement, improvement program, it was discussed that it would be a group of members that were not necessarily a planning board. And then it was discussed that there were concerns that there wasn't enough volunteers, and so became the planning board. But there's absolutely nothing that states the planning board needs to be that, and it is possible that there could be a group that's chosen or volunteered or whatever, that, that does this annually, because it is a huge project for the planning board and it is something that um needs to be done differently than we've done in the past.
I'm, I'm just trying to understand how the, the, the planning board is gonna use the C I P.
Right.
As it exists. I mean, they're gonna maintain that, et cetera, et cetera. We, whoever we is, but let's say that the board is gonna u- utilize this as the tool. Is that right? So, you know, we're gonna be using two different tools. I don't know what comes out of the planning board. I mean, they make certain decisions, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We make certain decisions, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, I'm just wondering how we're gonna have any issues with that as far as differences in what they say and, and what we say because of the numbers we look at versus the numbers they look at. I'm just trying to understand how it's, how it's gonna work, that's all.
Personally, for me, the C I P serves a function. But when I'm looking at the town as a whole, in terms of the whole budget, I cannot make decisions with only partial.
When we're looking at, when we're looking at.
Where we're looking at, because there's certain funds they don't even deal with.
Right.
You know, the, and, and they have to be funded, uh, just like any other, all those funds, so. And then uh their particular thing doesn't cover any buildings at this particular time, and that's our biggest asset. We have to plan for those particular things.
Yeah, it's been left off completely for years and I don't understand why. But it's because the department heads would bring their numbers and there was no department head for the building, so we didn't have any numbers. So something has to change if we're gonna continue in the same path. Because we, like, I remember during the discussion when I was running that uh, we, we stated the numbers that we needed and then it was sort of kind of vaguely decided, oh, that's too much, so let's do this number. And that wasn't based on any fact or forward thinking or what our needs were. So I think it's important we have this really broken down so we can make educated decisions about how much money.
And this is more numbers-based, for instance, for instance, let's just pick on, I'm nitpicking here.
All right.
The thing that John brought up before, in terms of the furnaces, for all these furnaces, they've had them in at twelve thousand dollars. Well, obviously John's done an assessment and that's way too high.
Mm-hmm.
So if planning board chooses to use that number, that's, that's fine. But for my particular purposes, I don't want to overfund this thing by another, what, five thousand dollars every time. Those monies could be going to something else that we deem as appropriate, so.
I, I was there in the room when that happened. Um, it had been listed at five thousand dollars.
Oh.
And our town administrator um came to the committee and said, the most recent purchase was six thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. So that should be entered as seven thousand dollars. But then it appeared it's not seven thousand dollars, but it'd be by coincidence, seven plus five, that's twelve thousand, and it's been like that for the last four or five years.
Those just need to be looked at. We need to really have to see why, how to get that number.
And.
Okay, so how do we implement?
Well, I think the first step.
Plug it into the computers and?
No, we're gonna get the departments.
So.
Yeah.
We'll get the department heads and get those particular things updated that they have control over. Some of these things, I think, we're gonna have to assign somebody to do.
Mm-hmm.
And so that might be out of somebody's, you know, purview.
Mm-hmm.
But I think when we get that information, we have to sit down and say, okay, we're, we put about, what, four, five hundred thousand dollars a year away, each year.
Right.
What can we do for those particular monies? And the other question that comes to my mind in terms of, and John's got one of these tabs here someplace, do we propose a bond for some of these things to get those particular things, you know, going? So I think that's things that we need to discuss as, as a board. And also in terms of, you know, we've tried it, what, two, three years? Turned to doing something for this town center and town buildings. What can the voters support?
Right.
Because the big thing is, we can come up with the best plan, but if they're saying, no, we don't, we don't wanna spend any money for that.
Right.
You know, we're wasting our time. So we have to, and that's the survey that you brought up, Katrina, in terms of what it is that, what is there, what are they looking for? What are they looking for for services? What are they looking for for support buildings and things like that? So I think that all of our decisions have to be tempered, tempered by that particular consideration, so.
I think it's really easy for us to talk to the same people all the time and to have the same input. And we talk to the, you know, the people that work with the town a lot, and we talk to some people from the town, but I think um it's really hard to know what everyone, and, and each person in the, in the town's opinion matters and, and we need to make sure we're reaching out to them.
Well, uh, there's no doubts. We talk to the same people all the time.
Yeah.
Get a very poor turnout at the, at the deliberative session, uh.
Right.
You know, the, I think we've tried a lot of things, but we haven't been very successful, so uh we need to figure that one out for sure.
Yeah, and we're not alone.
No, obviously not, but.
We're not alone. Our town is not alone in that particular issue.
But it doesn't have to just be the deliberative.
It was, I'm just saying, it's, it's part of the problem of trying to make a decision. How many surprises have we had? We put it up for a vote and they voted it down soundly, right?
Right, because we didn't know, we didn't listen to the polls.
Very, very difficult for sure, but I think that is indeed our biggest challenge.
And I think waiting till deliberative session where you've already gone to the point where you already have the numbers and the facts and stuff, you don't, you have no way to, to good course correct. So we need to be reaching out throughout the year and figuring out what people are wanting and thinking and making sure we're, we're sharing what we're working on so that they know. Um, and not everyone wants to come to a deliberative session, but they might be happy to do the survey. They might be happy to, potentially on Facebook, they might be happy to come to a select board meeting. So we have to open up our doors every way we can.
And that all starts by sending out what we're gauging in terms of what the plan is down the road to achieve those particular things.
Absolutely.
But I think one of the litmus tests that we don't have is, for instance, let's say, let's, I'm just picking this, this is the biggest thing on here, in terms of an office building. If we said in two thousand twenty-nine or whatever that it is, that we're planning on doing this, and between now and then, we're setting aside, you know, a hundred thousand and then we're bonding something at the end. I'm just putting this out.
Right.
And those particular warrant articles come up with a hundred thousand and nobody votes for it.
Right.
You've got your litmus test. If they vote for it, they, oh, they've kind of like, they, they, they think there's value in that. So I think that's one of the strategies we have to look at in terms of gauging what they're supportive and then putting those kind of warrant articles out there to gauge in terms of, you know, how kind of support there is.
Mm-hmm.
Because you're never gonna get all the people that come to vote to attend the meeting or to reach every single one of them.
No, but I think we talked also about making sure we discuss how much a percentage something is or give more information so that people can make, you know, if I see a hundred thousand dollars for a building, I don't understand. I'm not gonna vote for it. I don't understand why we need it. If, if someone's explained that's a plan and we're saving and we have this much money and it's this percent, then I'm much more likely to vote for something.
So what's, what's the plan to implement this? What are we gonna do?
Meeting with the department heads or having them send something in, but John's gonna create some things to be sent out.
So we're gonna send a directive to the department heads and we're gonna tell them there's three different ways that they can get the information to John, who is gonna be very helpful and get that in for us. Then once all that's compiled, I think we all look at it and start to make some, um look, you know, look at what things are, make sense and don't, and then ask questions. And then I think we meet with the department heads either individually or together, depending on how many questions we have, I guess, I don't know.
Yep. Well, they're all invited to all the meeting.
Of course.
But in terms of like.
Have a topic and then.
We do, yeah.
Right.
And just, I'll just share something with you. I was at a um gathering on Saturday and one of the topics that came up is because they got their assessment.
Of course.
So this person's house went for a little over three hundred thousand to almost half a million.
Yeah.
And he said, oh, there was an exploditive in there. I won't tell you what it is. Exploded in there. My taxes are going up big time. And I said, whoa, 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 timeout, timeout, timeout.
That's something.
He said, we're raising the same amount of money. Your house value went up, but the tax rate is gonna go down appropriately.
Mm-hmm.
Really? And I said, yeah, the tax rate doesn't stay the same, it just fluctuates. So we have an education process out there, and that's not the first time I've heard that.
I've heard that a million times in the last week and I have to explain it as well.
It's very confusing. And it doesn't happen every single time, every single year, but every five years, we do this reassessment thing every time, so.
So is that something we could?
Well, we definitely need to get that word out.
Quickly, yeah, cause people are getting stressed.
I mean, put it on Lee E. Cryer or something.
That's what I was gonna say.
Could we, there's this article, Julie put an article on the website and I updated it just recently, put in the numbers.
Perfect.
On there to call the first, to call the regal person, to make appointments, um.
That's if they don't like the evaluation, but the tax rate, can we explain how the tax rate?
It's all, it's in there.
It's in there, yeah.
Yeah, it's in there.
I'm just thinking something that's a little bit like, I've read, you know, I'm thinking I'm a busy person, I've got kids, I gotta get to whatever, and I just look at that and it's a lot of words, and so I need to figure it out. Is there a way to like do a quick visual, I'm a very visual person, chart, you know, your house was this, now it's this. The tax rate changes based on that.
We should put anything out there that's so definite.
Numbers. No, 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 of course not. But I mean, just some like example.
I could just highlight the section that.
Yeah.
Says.
That's true.
In red.
Right.
You know, the tax rate will change, but without making any promises that it's gonna.
Right.
Change enough to not make your taxes go up.
Right. It will not go proportionally to your.
Ready to start implementing this? I mean, we're gonna go around and hand everybody to follow up with people again or?
No, no.
How do we, how do we change over?
So you have a meeting Monday.
Uh-huh.
Um, I think that for Monday, I can have um those individual spreadsheets made and so forth. Um, and well, I guess maybe actually voted on it now, but so on, on Monday or, or day after Monday, um you send out the directive or instructions to department heads.
Right.
Um, that these, to update this, these are the ways it can be done.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and um either, you know, you tell me who to send those out to and I send them out, we, we, so, so that gets done. Um, you should decide, um, do you want it done in a week or two weeks or three weeks or, you know, whatever you want.
Right.
Um, and, and requesting that the department heads complete it within X. Um, I need some time to get it all into the spreadsheet. Um, and then the spreadsheet should go out to everybody, particularly to the board members. So that the board members have, and it's up to you, but I would think at least a week.
Mm-hmm.
Um, where you can look at it, look at the results before you're together again and, and deliberating about what the next step is and what do we need to focus on and.
So you have time to do it by Monday. If we then said you have two weeks to review and input data, then you would have another week to do that, to do that input, and then we'd have a full another week until the next board meeting where we could review it and then discuss it. Does that make sense to everyone? So two weeks to the department heads, a week for you and a week for us.
Now, do you have any idea what department head has the most and what number is that?
The highway and transfer stations.
Is it highway?
Yes, five million.
Well, yeah, because he's got um highway equipment, um, he's got um roads and bridges, he's got a transfer station, and now he's got lots of buildings.
Yes, it's basically half him and half everyone else.
He's, he's got, you know, I said, for um the cost estimates you need around, is around a hundred. I think I counted ninety-eight, it's like minimum.
Mm-hmm.
He's got more than half of them. I mean, there's, right now, there's thirty, thirty-two just for buildings.
Are there ways that we can help him with some of the things that, that we know or we, or we have information? Like I'm thinking the town hall innovation committee put a lot of time and effort into some numbers. Is there a way we can share some of that data?
Well, well, some, some of this is already in here.
Right, okay.
So um, you know, so this um town hall pre-construction rehab cost, if you're gonna do that, I mean, we have that in writing.
Okay, great.
That's, that's this thing right here. It's one like Malik's saying, all the things it's gonna do and what is it gonna cost.
Okay.
And the thing is.
And it has a date on it, January twenty twenty-one.
And it's an order of magnitude in terms of, you know, we're talking sixty thousand dollars. If it's sixty-five, that's not necessarily gonna change our things.
Exactly.
So, but yeah, if it's, the furnace is six, seven thousand, it means actually, wow, that's a big difference.
Yeah.
But I think, I think some of these particular things are gonna be conceptual. What is our concept for the annex? What is our concept for the parish house going forward? I think we're gonna find that many of those things are gonna drop off because we just can't afford them.
Right. Steve, Steve already asked me about those furnaces. He said, why are those twelve thousand?
Right.
He said, we haven't spent twelve thousand on a furnace.
Perfect.
Um, now, I did, I did add the word boiler, cause it should be pointed out, this one is a boiler, this one is a boiler, um, this one is a furnace.
Okay.
That's why boilers are more, and, and the ones we've purchased recently evolved in furnaces.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think boilers are a little more expensive.
Are we keeping an eye on the environmental impact of the different choices as we're changing things and?
So Katrina, we should make you the guru of implementation.
How do I get that, Tom? Just cause I talk a lot?
The guru.
Um, I don't, I don't know about that. I'm just saying that I think that we should be.
You'll know about it then, but you know about it now. Somebody has to be the guru of implementation.
Implementation as in we? Well, I think the town administrator will help us to pass this to the, to the people, right? And then we'll get it back. What am I implementing? Doing it?
Process queen.
Process queen.
Cause it's the process.
We need to make sure that, you know, everybody's on board, they start getting it loaded, they.
Okay.
We have any problems.
You just want me to be the harasser in chief, is that what you're saying?
That's all.
Got it, harasser in chief. Okay. I can, I can touch base with department heads as they go forward. That's fine.
Well, the thing is, if Steve's got so many, maybe we take a key indicator from him. If he's two weeks into it and he's only got half of them, then maybe just do an assessment in terms of maybe we wait a little bit or something.
Or we do the other ones while we have time and then you keep working on that.
You could do that too.
Or you do the parts he has done.
I, I think that the department head should, should get the message that um we're trying to work on continuous improvement here.
Exactly.
Um, so this is the state we have right now, and as, as you add information, you're improving it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it isn't all gonna be perfect. You're not gonna have.
It's never static.
We're not expecting that we have competitive bids for every item on there with all the documents and so forth.
Right. We're just looking for the best we can.
In two weeks, no.
Mostly we just need to know what are the things that are coming up down the pike that we might not be thinking of, or there might not have been a place to write it, or somebody didn't ask, or whatever. We just wanna have those in there.
There's gonna be some problems, that's for sure.
Of course.
Yes, and, and I, and I expect that department heads, there may be places where some help is needed.
Mm-hmm.
It should be pointed out that um some of this can be really simple. Um, so this was an example, okay? So this was an example, okay? That's a notepad.
Okay, that's great.
Because some of these might be that you called somebody at a company.
Yeah.
And you talked to so-and-so on such a date, and you asked him, if, if I need to replace that generator out there.
Great.
And it's so many kilowatts, and it's a diesel, blah, 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 what should I budget for it? And you get a verbal, so it could just be a notepad like this one is.
That's great.
This is an old one. The other thing is, right now, well, in Microsoft Excel, as these links, hyperlinks are entered, there can be one hyperlink per cell. There is a way to enter multiple hyperlinks where you put in, you put in a shape, so you put in several little rectangles in the cell, and then within each shape, you can put in a hyperlink, and that's getting to kind of complicated, I'm not sure we wanna go to that point. So for some of these, I've taken multiple PDFs, and just in my PDF editing program, and combined them into one PDF. So you get all three of those estimates in one PDF. It might be that that's not something we're asking department heads to do.
Right, right, right.
Maybe I do it. I don't know if they have.
Very lucky to have you today, share your energy with us. Thank you.
So I don't know if they all have PDF editing software, and we certainly do not want people making PDFs using Microsoft, right to PDF.
Right.
It cannot compress, it produces gigantic files.
Right. We just wanna have it so that whoever is on this board in six years can look back, figure out why we made an estimate, make sure it's the right estimate, maybe check some things, hey, you know, this looks like it could be reviewed, or whatever, so it's easy, so that it's just always, it's not about who's in the building, it's about just, the data's where it needs to be, and the name range is where it needs to be.
And that's where the I column is, if it gets so old that it becomes a number symbol, that's time, you gotta look at it.
We should retire.
Yeah, I thought that that was actually good, there's no point in knowing whether it's 10, or 11, or 15.
It's a number, just, we're done.
That one actually came from back in 2010.
Great.
The town voted to put a sprinkler system in this building.
And we didn't do it?
No.
Why didn't we do it?
Because some, hmm?
Did we get the grant?
Yes, it, it was expected that like 90-something percent of it was gonna come from a grant.
And it didn't?
Apparently not.
Nope.
And the cost is.
The sprinkler system in the whole building, or just in the base out there?
No, it was, it was the whole building.
Whole building?
Yeah, it was $288,000, and that was back in 2010.
So imagine what that is now.
And most of the.
Well, right now, I gotta do the 46, 46, 47, 48.
Can we look into, since they've already voted yes, and we have some of me from the thinking, we look into that?
No, that terminates, terminates.
It terminates, okay. So you have to look into some of you.
Let's go through here.
Where do you?
Totally good.
The fire department has to quickly move the truck out, so that it can then save the building. This is really not working, so, okay.
Well, I think we had a quick decision about the sprinkler system in the base, that